Before Vern comes, let's do the call to order.
One, one second, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Okay, did you guys all hear that?
Yep.
Yeah, yes.
That's new, huh?
I guess they must have updated or done something because this thing has got a mind of its own now.
Yeah, it talks too.
So does my computer. Geez. Well, I will announce that it is six oh two and I'm going to call to order the meeting of the June first meeting of the South Kingstown Conservation Commission twenty twenty one. Let's start with roll call. Mary Tabarabiano.
Yeah.
Lorraine Jubert.
Here.
Matt Bradywood.
Here.
Christopher O'Connor.
Here.
Great. And Heffron is not going to be here this evening and we are still waiting to hear from Vern Wyman. I am David Flanders Chair and with us is our staff person Jay Parker. Jay, anyone else in on the meeting that we should acknowledge?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we will go through the approval of the minutes for the May fourth meeting. Does anyone have any? If not, I have one. On item F, new business, I would add the words after we discussed the Conservation Commission budget monies to the Friends of the Saga Tucket, I would add the words for water quality monitoring. And I don't know, Jay, you can tell me if this is applicable or not, but item H, where we have update from staff on planning department activities. Would it have been appropriate that we announced the town manager resignation? Because it came as a surprise to me and I don't know if it was here or later in the month, whatever. Do you know when that was made known?
I believe it was later in the month. I don't believe it was at this meeting.
Okay, okay. Well, then otherwise I would hear a motion to approve the minutes as.
So.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second was by Mary. The motion was made by
Right.
And the second was done by Mary Tabarabiano. Any further discussion? Hearing done? Do we hear? I or nay?
Except the minutes.
I.
Okay, motion passed. I'd be get like. Second is the May tenth minutes presented. Do we have any comments or additions or subtractions or corrections? For the May tenth twenty one twenty one meeting? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve the meetings for the May tenth meeting?
I'll approve the minutes, a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
For me. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, Matt Bradywood seconds. Hearing none, the motion is passed to accept the May tenth minutes. Moving on. Old business. I do have a report of the motion that we pass to pass our expenditures on to the watershed watch through the Friends of the Saga Tucket. There was an issue of the mechanics of having to do that, that we couldn't just acquiesce our funds to a different group. So what we had to, Friends of the Saga Tucket, so I was in a phone call with both Jay and Town Manager Robert Zarnetsky. And what had to happen was that there was a legal problem with just passing the funds on to another group. So what Robert came up with and which was successful was that we had to get an invoice from watershed watch for these funds, the nine hundred thirty nine dollars payable to them because they are the umbrella financial group at this point for Friends of the Saga Tucket until the Friends get their own five oh three dash C, if that's the correct terminology, funding. So we did get that invoice from the watershed watch and it did go to the town and payable to the conservator, demanding the funds from the Conservation Commission. The only glitch, and I don't think it was a major one, Jay, you can confirm this. It listed Jay as the Chair of the Conservation Commission. But the invoice did go through to the Conservation Commission. And Jay, do you have any updates on? If that was paid yet or what?
I do not. I was sent off to finance for issuance of the payment. I don't know if that's been paid or not.
Okay. So that's at the, we understood that that was some sort of imperative that it get done before June first. And I think it got in before June first. And so I'll leave it to the town, you know, on that. New business, discussion on the Conservation Commission activities and initiatives. One thing that I had been thinking is that because I'm on the Rhode Island Tree Council where we review funding for various applications for what used to be the America Beautiful Grant and is now called the Urban and Community Forestry Grant, UFC, UCF Grant. In the past, South Kingstown has not been eligible because we do not have a comprehensive tree program, which would include, include a budgeting for planting and maintenance of town trees. And those are the town, the trees that are within the town right of way. So what we did in twenty fourteen was essentially a little bit of under the, under the wire where we did a program which is hugely successful of having applicants for a setback tree program where the trees would be planted on private property within twenty feet of the town right of way and that they would maintain mulch and water accessor, the trees. And out of the fifty applicants, we had twenty were accepted and that's all the trees we had. And out of those twenty trees, seventeen are living viable and looking great. But technically, as I said, that was under the wire. We, we cannot apply for any of these grants because we do not have, South Kingstown does not have a comprehensive tree program that would involve planting, pruning, maintenance, et cetera. When we first had our community tree citizens group in nineteen ninety five, there was no, actually, there was a budget for planting and pruning and it was fifteen thousand dollars each. As time went on and our elder trees started to decay, we had to borrow money from the planting project into the pruning and maintenance. Eventually, that disappeared. And so presumably, there is still a line budget item somewhere. If either in Department of Public Services or in the town budget itself, a line item for fifteen to thirty thousand dollars for tree maintenance. And so I asked Jay and the last, at the last minute, by the way, and I don't expect to get a comprehensive answer because it was too short a time. But I would like as an initiative of the Conservation Commission Pre-Board to reestablish a, at least a budget and then buy it for tree maintenance, particularly tree planting. At one point, and our tree warden, Bill Wallace, can quote this. We had a policy of no net loss of trees in South Kingstown. Well, I checked out our tree ordinance and anything else. I found nothing that actually put that wording into, you know, verbiage, you know, town law code. So that doesn't actually exist, even though it was an agreement, a pinky agreement between the town council and everyone else. So I would like us, you know, as one idea of what we could apply ourselves to over the next fiscal year is to, you know, establish what we want to do here with our town trees. Our town trees are aging and they're falling apart and A, they're not getting pruned. We're instead having limbs falling down on our town roads. Robinson Street is a good example. There are many good examples. When I was on Lake Street doing a separate individual tree planting program, a woman came out to me and said, hey, when we moved here, this was a canopied tree, a street. And I said, well, that's, you know, a good idea to pursue. So I would like to see some, you know, baby steps to initiating some kind of policy that we should initiate as the Town Tree Board to re-canop-ing our, our streets in town. So that's my thought. That's all.
David, this is Jay. If I, if I may, I do have an answer for you in regards to your, your question with the tree planting budget. John Shock responded to me. Actually, I talked to him on the phone and then he followed up with an email. They have thirty five hundred dollars budgeted in this fiscal year for agricultural supplies in the town warden's budget, which is essentially for new tree plantings. Currently, he, they are hoping to use these funds to replace the three to four dead trees on Main Street and in Peastale. But that, that is the extent of the budget for trees with the, with TPW.
Thank you for doing the research. Appreciate it. I would also mention at this point, because we're talking about replacing the trees on Main Street and I don't know about those on Peastale, in Peastale, but oh gosh, it must have been twenty years ago, our Citizens Tree Group went to mulch and remulch wrap the trees planted in the sidewalks on Main Street. And we found that there was no organic soil in those tree pits. We found that it was like cinder, like you'd find on a railroad bed. So if the are to be replanted, it has to be stipulated that the pits be redug and replaced with organic material so that these trees will actually survive. And Bill Wallace mentioned this to me and he said, what would you suggest as species? And I'm thinking anything that's columnar, like columnar maples or whatever. But the project has to be rethought and thirty five hundred dollars is going to do like two of these trees. It's that is an insufficient amount.
David, David, I should read the rest of the email. I stopped short because I'm probably going to need some help pronouncing this. But the trees they're looking to go with are Musachino Valkova, which are the same trees that DOT replanted on Tower Hill Road. These trees are supposed to be salt tolerant and grow in a more of a columnar configuration so as not to impact vehicle traffic.
Yep.
Mr. Shock spoke with Bill Wallace this afternoon and he's in agreement with the species and will be trying to get some prices so they can get them secured. The Highway Division will be doing the planting using a mini excavator and it would be appreciated if the tree, if tree board members would provide guidance at the time of planting and perhaps oversight. Once planted, the Highway Division will need to order them on a regular basis. And that's the end of the email.
Thank you. And certainly, the second most important thing, by the way, the species are perfect for street trees because there is a limited amount of space. But, and I also appreciate that they're thinking about replacing the the planting medium in that space. And I think those.
You know what the common name is for that?
No, I don't.
No, I, I don't either. I was curious.
Isn't Zalkova a type of bell?
It is. It's a, it's a Chinese owl and they come in various species, various configurations rather. Some of them spread out a lot with so many variant branches that they need to be pruned. But the ones that have been planted in the medium on Old Tower Hill Road, I think that's a good choice. But I have to reiterate that watering is everything. And if the town is not going to back that up with watering, it's a futile effort. So I appreciate the, the thought and let's follow up on that. That's a great idea.
The, the trees that you're talking about that are going to be planted, where are they going to be planted on? What area are we talking about on Main Street?
In the existing, I, I believe, and Jay can, can check this out. I believe they're going to be in the existing sites where the trees are not doing well in the existing tree planting sites that are not filled with organic material. They're right along Main Street. They're dug out of the, out of the sidewalk. One idea that we had posed at the time was that the tree sites be pushed out from the sidewalk into the roadway to provide a slowing down mechanism, but also dilate parking spaces and not impede pedestrian traffic along the sidewalk. But apparently that's not being considered here. So we're talking about replacing species that particularly, if you think about it in front of the Chevrolet dealership where they've just, you know, died from lack of care and lack of watering, that I think those are the sites we're talking about.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
On this too. For the buyer retention mix, they, they should be looking at the Rhode Island DOT Stormwater Manual, which is more recent or more recent update than the DEM manual. And also check with the Providence Stormwater Innovation Center, which I believe is recommending six feet width, six feet in width for tree, for tree planting. I could, I could look up the recommendations of the Providence Stormwater Innovation Center. And, you know, maybe the DOT manual also.
Lorraine, I would like to see an eight by eight or a six by eight, which would necessitate it being pushed out into the.
I agree, right. The six would be the absolute minimum.
Or is just not workable.
The tree is just going to die if there's not enough space for the roots to grow.
It is.
Plus, they could connect them underneath. You know, built, you know, if they had a series of, of plantings, the whole area could be dug out so the roots can spread below.
Well, you know, that's what we had proposed ten years ago for the possible Old Tower Hill Road plantings that we had this median strip like, like they do in Boston. And they had a, you know, we had them connected and fed by stormwater runoff. That would have been an ideal thing. But you know.
So this is in the Saga Tucket, which is impaired, right? So if the town is doing this, they can claim it towards activity to restore this Saga Tucket, which would help for their stormwater permit.
This is good. Well.
Sometimes there, there are grants that, that fund these kinds of construction projects. The town should be on the lookout for these things.
I agree. I agree. Well, I know that our now leaving a town manager was in support of some of these things. But the incoming town manager, we need to talk with him about these issues. This, this has to be more present.
Do we know who the incoming town manager is going to be?
I think they're only interviewing at this point. We have a, we have a temporary one and she is very receptive to all sorts of wonderful ideas. She was the former or probably still head of Parks and Recreation, I think. She's a very receptive woman. She's, she may be able to, you know, get these ideas flowing in the right direction. Jay, you know her name. What's her name?
Sorry, who is that?
The, the current acting town.
Terry Murphy.
Terry Murphy.
Yep. She's very receptive to all sorts of good ideas. So maybe we should, you know, either write a, a letter to her. Do we have any idea, Jay, as to what the process is or where we, how far along we are in the process of getting a new town manager? Are we interviewing?
I have no idea.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, does the commission want to, you know, posit ideas for a positive, a possible letter to Terry Murphy, Acting Town Manager for where we might want to go for these town tree plantings?
David, I'm going to suggest that the board hold off on taking any action. Right now, the agenda item is just ideas for initiatives.
Right.
So we, my advice would be to stick to just brainstorming for ideas that the commission can either take, take up at a later time, possibly the next meeting. Or, or, you know, just stay within the bounds of the agenda item that's listed.
Okay. Well, I would like to suggest that we take up tree planting ideas, town tree planting ideas, town street tree planting ideas with the acting town manager for next month's meeting. Do we need a motion for that?
No, I mean, you, you can set the agenda as the chair. So you can advise everyone that if it's okay with everyone else, you, that is a discussion item for next month.
Is everyone comfortable with discussing this next month with the possibility of drafting a letter as to what we feel is important regarding tree plantings for next month? Does anybody?
Definitely.
Does anyone have any objection to that? Okay. Well, Jay, let's go ahead and put that on the agenda for next month's meeting.
Will do.
Okay, does anybody, you know, we were given this agenda for brainstorming. Does anybody have any ideas of other initiatives that the Conservation Commission should take on that we could talk about and get, you know, use our funding for, for next year? You know, we had the funding issue come up at the last minute for this fiscal year and I think we made a good choice. But I do want us to be thinking about, you know, how we want to spend our money over the next year. So let me hear from everybody else.
Do we get, I'm sorry, Lorraine. Which just annually is our, our amount allotted.
Well, I can tell you it's changed in that it used to be, I was thinking we were going to be looking at eight hundred and fifty dollars and it turned out to be nine hundred and thirty nine. So I don't know where that money comes from. The, by the way, it used to be as much as twenty five hundred dollars. And what was done historically was that the town council relegated where those monies were spent. And they had X hundred dollars going to this water testing program, X hundred dollars to Save the Bay, X hundred dollars to various other state boards and commissions and local entities as well. And it was only, and I'm going to be inaccurate here, only a few years ago that our current or semi-current commission said, we want control over where we're going to spend the money because it was pointed out. I remember Lorraine pointed out one program that was, did not need any money at all. It was totally obsolete. And so we found other ones that were just not in our need and their need. So we then took control over it and we ended up spending our money on a couple of great programs by Save the Bay where they were doing an initiative to elementary schools, I believe this fourth grade, where they came in and talked about stormwater runoff. And they had models that they, and it engaged the kids. It was great and it was money well spent. And we had done also tree plantings. We'd done tree plantings at the animal shelter at Tucker Town Park. And so we had discretion over, over our money. And so, but the, the amount has varied and I have no idea how or why it varied. So I was surprised to hear as we had as much as nine hundred and thirty nine dollars. Really? I was expecting eight hundred and fifty. So I would like maybe as another part of our initiative for next year is to get a solid figure that's guaranteed for the next X number of years with possible cost of living increase built in. I mean, I argue that we've been fighting for the last ten years to get a certain minimum wage. And by the time it's passed, well, great, now we have to go for another five years. Dollars. So I, I would like to make that an initiative that we explore to get the Conservation Commission a solid budget that we can use our discretionary funds. And so let's talk about that next, next month.
But what about, I think that's a good idea. I'd like to discuss that. And then that way, if we also have an idea about how much various items would cost.
Yep.
Then we could propose the budget based on how we're going to spend it. So one item I had is So one item I had is the grants from the where the treat, the fun, the funding for municipal trees. Where does that come from? Is it DEM or some other group?
I can tell you that the only trees that have been planted on town right of way have come from what's actually previously been called America of the Beautiful Grants. And that is, by the way, how we funded that successful twenty-fourteen setback. It's now called the Urban and Community Forestry Grant, the UCF Grant. But I don't know how we managed to do that in twenty-fourteen because the town of South Kingstown does not meet the requirement for even applying for those grants.
Right, because we need a plan.
Apprehensive tree.
So so what if we hired a consultant with Conservation Commission money to write a very simple plan?
Because that consultant will have to come up against a certain head of a certain department in town who is gonna reject that.
Well, I mean, it could be something that we discuss with the with the department heads and and reach a general agreement. The issue, one of the issues is if the trees must only be street trees, then the program of planting on private property probably wouldn't be covered by those grants.
Right, correct. The only reason we moved the idea of planting onto private property was because the town administration has an official policy, by the way, of not planting any more street trees. Right? That was an agreement between the town manager, two managers ago, and the Director of Pub Public Services. That's an official town policy. No planting of town trees, except in parks and stuff.
So the ones you're talking about for Main Street are not going to be in the right of way? It seems like they would be.
That was done by the DEM. Those those ones on Tower Hill or Old Tower Road, those are, that's DEM.
We're talking about DOT did those as part of the rest renovation, but the new ones we're talking about down, further down by the river. Those would be in the right, they're because they're replacements, it's okay.
You know, I don't know, because when, that is, by the way, a state road. Main Street is that we conceive of Main Street is is a state road. So and the state DOT redid that road and put in those plantings. I don't know how officially the maintenance of those trees was passed off to the set. I don't know. And the town of County South Kingstown would say, hey, we didn't plant them. So nobody watered them. That was a volunteer effort done by Mr. Bell of the Bell Block, by the way, a wonderful guy. And he took out his hose and he just watered those trees. But they wouldn't even be alive today if it were not for a volunteer effort. But they weren't even planted in organic material. It was cinders like as a riverbed. So I don't know, well, you know, I think we need to have a consensus for, you know, making a directive and forming the directive to whom is it town, is it the state, it is a state road. And yet I think the town accepted the trees. So I I'm, I do not know the answers to that. So if they are, if whoever they is are planning on replacing those trees, we have to be very clear as to who is gonna be responsible for their maintenance and for establishing the organic material in which they're they're embedded. Because it's it's not acceptable. For instance, that new bank, the Bank of Rhode Island that went in on the, I guess would be the east side of Main Street. They put in six trees. And they all died. And I took photos of them and I was still looking at the shards of the metal baskets above the soil line. I mean, it was just, and they went through three plantings. And our staff person at the time, a principal planter, Dennis Fani Taro, called them on it and called them on it three times. And finally, everybody gave up. And they're all dead, you know. So how do we administrate? What is good and who is going to, I mean, they took it on as a private entity. But if we talk about those trees, we have to firmly establish which entity, state, town, is going to be dealing with that? And is it going to be the watering that's required to do that?
So what you're talking about is an enforcement issue. And I think that's a problem with almost any subdivision. And so maybe that is another thing for brainstorming for next time. How do we be sure that the draft, the draft plans, all those recommendations translate into the final plans and the actual construction? Because often this doesn't seem to be any relationship between the proposal and the final product and no, no enforcement when the plants die.
That is the good starting point, correct? After that, you have to get into administration. And which entity is responsible for it? And so, yes, step one, step two, yep. Yeah, I've been butting heads with these, our town for twenty-five years. And I really don't, I really don't wanna continue. I mean, if they're if the administrators of the various departments don't wanna engage, they're 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 gonna shut us, they're shut down. And it's just so frustrating. I've had my say for twenty-five years. I'm, I I don't know what to do. I really don't know what to do.
In terms of enforcing the the rules when there's new development, you know, if the plantings die on the books, they're supposed to be replaced. So maybe the first board to speak with is the planning board because they're the ones that make those decisions and require those stipulations and they should be concerned with enforcement also.
I have gone out to these developments and I have photo documented that they were planted too deep. And I've taken it back to the town and nothing has happened and the trees have died. And I've shown to die back, photo documented. And sometimes they get replaced, but we can't go through these cycles of because they're only guaranteed for a year that every year we replace them with new trees that do not get watered or or they're planted incorrectly. It's a stupid cycle. There has to be, you know, the tree warden ideally would be the person overseeing all of this. I greatly respect Bill Wallace, but he, at his age, is not going to take on this progressive role. But we do need someone besides me apparently who has some authority, I don't have authority, somebody who has authority in the town to oversee this and make it happen. And you know, the town, by the way, has put out a call, an employment notice for an arborist to be out there who's going to be doing the required pruning and maintenance of our trees and such. They haven't had any bites. So maybe they're not offering enough financial incentives. But Rob Zarnetsky told me months ago that he had an offer out, public notice for an arborist for a year. And no one has has bitten. So there's a problem here and I don't know the roots. I don't know what to do, you know. So on that optimistic note, does anyone else have ideas on what the Conservation Commission should be working on for the next year?
Chris, should we be doing anything about plastic bags, making sure those are not being used anymore? Talking about enforcement?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I mean, we know that the town sent new notices out according to the manager and I know Jay along the correspondence. But, you know, the I haven't been back. By, the issue I had was with one of the the larger shopping menus that need to be passing them out. You know, there was no plastic bag ban. They were just giving them out wholesale. So I don't know where those things stand. I don't know if there's been any follow-up. I don't know if there were any other, I think, the the gist I got from the manager was that there were perhaps multiple multiple locations having issues. But I don't know how we enforce that on our end. Other than calling people out, not calling people out, we'll call it businesses out.
Right.
And that enforcement is is done through the town manager's office.
Right, through the ordinance, right?
Correct, correct, town code, town ordinance.
So so the the are, to the extent that we're aware of non-compliance, it would be, you know, we could all, you know, report it to the town manager office who's in charge of making sure that there's compliance. With the state of things that may not get a high priority.
Does anybody else have anything to add for ideas that we should be talking about next month for you know, what we might be thinking of for the next year? And that would include how we might want to be spending our budget. And to that point, Jay, I would say, do you have any idea or can you tell us next month of what that amount might be?
Actually, I was just looking it up. I couldn't find it.
And why does it vary?
I don't know. I'm gonna show you. Give me one second.
David, I have a question for you since when while Jay looks that up. Your point regarding the 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 town having a comprehensive tree program. The the organization that requires it, you you may want to check to see if they have some form of, if they require it, whether they have some form of a model. What, not ordinance, but a a motto, model, program requirements, you know, what would go into something like that?
I will be doing that because I was reminded of this whole idea because the Grants Committee is gonna be meeting in the next month. And I I did wanna know what the, what the requirements were. So I will be finding, I will give you all a report next month. I just didn't do the homework today. So, yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
Think it has, do you, from what you know, and maybe you don't know, but do you think it's something that arises to the level of an ordinance or if it's something less than that, a policy?
It's it's a number of components. One is to have a tree ordinance. The second is to have a budget. And there's no, I don't believe there's any monetary minimum. But there has to be a budget for tree planting and tree maintenance. And there has to establish tree board, which we are. And so we meet, you know, two out of those three requirements so far. So I I'll get back to us, you know, next month with the, but that is the basic stuff that I know. And so far, I don't know, and Jay's gonna help me find out if we have a linear, I mean, delineated budget item for tree planting and for tree maintenance. And if we do have one for tree planting, I wanna go back X number of months and see, okay, what trees did we plant? And I don't mean necessarily in parks, but I want on town right of ways. And what species they were and when they were planted, because I want to do follow-up. I do that voluntarily. I go look at them and say, okay, well, this is planted too deep or this one is dying or that. I'm willing to do that voluntarily. But the, what the town should be doing, I'm willing to do that. But I want that data. And I think that the Grants Committee is gonna need that data. So I will get back to you with specifics, you know, next month, because I will be asking those questions. And I'll be meeting with the DEM Urban Forestry Manager. So for the Grants, you know, committee meeting. So I'll find that out and I'll get back to us.
Got to go back to your budget question. I went ahead and pulled up the last a few, the past budgets.
Yep.
And can you see that?
It's on my phone, Jay. It's much too small.
All right. So for those of you that can see it or can't see it, I try to, I'll try to blow this up a little more. This is two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen fiscal year. You see eight fifty across the board for those years going back actually two thousand ten, two thousand two thousand twelve. We go forward to FY two thousand fifteen. It remained the same and at eight fifty.
That's why I was surprised to see nine thirty-nine for this year, because the eight fifty sounded familiar.
Right. So then you see in FY nineteen, you're actually negative by two oh nine. Not sure, again, I don't know how that happened. I I don't have any of the background information. The FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one was six fifty. The projected was nine thirty-nine.
Okay, okay.
But the, it's a baseline six fifty, so somewhere along the lines. Well, six years ago or so, or five years ago or so, it was cut by two hundred dollars. But that's what went into the manager's budget historic, the budget historically. I have a feeling that that nine thirty-nine somehow or other had some carryover in it or something. Generally, that doesn't happen, but neither does an arbitrary increase to a to a to a line item in a proposed budget.
When we were talking with Jamie Rabbit about this issue, he said, if you can't spend that money, we can carry it over. Now, I don't know if he was just acting in his capacity or if that could, he could actually make that legislatively happen. But he he alluded that we could have carryover.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure about that. I, the way that I've, in my fourteen years of municipal government, if you don't use it, it gets absorbed and back into the general fund.
Right, right. Okay. Yep. Okay, Chris, you had something else?
No, that was it, David. No, thank.
Yeah, I've got a question about about right of way. Is there is there a standard distance of town right of way?
And it's the funny thing, when you go down to the town engineer's office, because we wanted to plant a tree for Leona Helmsley in the town right of way. And so I'm on not Rodman Road. And so I went down to the engineer's office and he drove me out in his pickup truck with his maps. And the way that town right of ways are drawn, they're angular drawings, because the the road is very curvy, but the right of way is angular. And don't ask me why. And you'd think that, okay, it's X number of feet from the center line of And don't ask me why. And you'd think that, okay, it's X number of feet from the center line of the road. It's not. However, those engineering drawing, drawings are written, the angular ones. And to the actual road is how it's determined. So you could have a right of way off of the asphalt that is six feet or could be twelve feet. So it changes and you have to really verify with the town engineer's office what the right of way is at that particular, you know, point.
And this, this is not a problem that's, or this is not a, I wouldn't even really call it an issue. This is not a topic or a concept that is foreign to any municipality. Right of ways, I mean, we live in a, in a environment that was built out long ago. These roads were in existence a long time ago. Property lines were established a long time ago.
Right.
There are various size rights of way and width. However, the roads are never centered or aside from brand new developments or brand new streets, even then, I don't, even then, they're not centered, dead center in the middle of the right of way necessarily. You just don't get it. You have a standard with roadway surface and then an existing right of way distance, right of way width. So there is no, there is no set calculation or any way that you can figure out. It's not standard on any property or any, any roadway at all.
Right. And I, I just was, I, I was just imagining how nice it would be if we could have some sort of document or list that, where we could know all the trees that are in the town right of way. I understand that that's near an impossibility. I just was, the first step towards that was wondering if there was a standard right of way that someone could walk down a street and, and just maybe very slowly over time, sort of get, just, just walk down a street and in some standard way, be able to identify which trees were on town property and which weren't. But it sounds like that's a, a much taller order.
But I, I, I wouldn't. I was given some guidelines by that town engineer. He says, you can look at those stone walls and you can look at telephone poles. Telephone poles are never on private property. They are on town right of way. And you say, wow, that telephone pole is really close to the road. Isn't that a danger? He said, well, no, because that's all the room they had to plant it. Telephone poles, you can also look for those granite. You can't find them a lot, but the granite postings that delineate a property line. But the stone walls and the telephone poles give you a really good idea of what is the town right of way. And aside from that, if you really had a question where you wanted to plant a tree or do something, is this in the town right of way or not? Just go down to the town engineer's office, you know, Department of Public Services, and they'll come out and they'll easily tell you. I mean, or actually, I had the question for right of way for the town engineer, Rich Bulliase. And he sent me this fantastic email with GPS and colored lines of the town right of way. I mean, you can do this online and it's fantastic. So it's easy to determine these days, much more than it was, you know, ten years ago.
I, I just would add that stone walls are frequently a great indicator of property boundaries, but not all the time. So where you see a stone wall, all those things give you a good idea of a point of reference possibly. But it's not, by, by any means, it's not a way to confirm it with any sense of confidence. But to what Matthew was saying, it is a tall order, but it's not necessarily past the town's ability to do so. So right now, I know that the, the town is looking at new software for their asset management, where they can inventory and manage, say, catch basins, outfalls, things of that nature. Street trees could be considered an asset and they could be GPS and put into this software, this program. Now, when you think about it, an asset along the lines of highway, you have street signs, you have all kinds of assets that need to get identified and located. It really depends on where that fall, where the street trees fall on the list of priority or whether or not they send crews out to GPS every asset on a certain section of street. And they get the trees at the same time that they get to the manholes and the catch basins and all that stuff as far as GPS location. It's a tall order. Perhaps there is an interest in DPS knowing that, because it may help in, it may help in, in some of the required, their, their reporting requirements. Also may help in identifying liabilities and determining, you know, where work gets performed and how they, how that dovetail, dovetails with management of their activities at DPS, what they've maintained, what they've done. So it is a tall order, but I don't know if it's something that is impossible. I think it is possible, it's just to the extent of what DPS wants to use that software for.
It would be a great project for an intern, summer intern.
Well, I have to say that in the late nineteen nineties, after we participated in a group with U S Amherst and doing a citizens' tree inventory sample, that it was two, a year after that, it was still the late nineteen nineties, that the town did a street tree inventory. And that data is somewhere recorded in GPS. Every tree, every tree. And we were told at that time, and I look today to see if that was ever put in writing anywhere, and it's not. But we were told, and Bill Wallace, our tree warden, mentioned it last month, that town policy is that there is no net loss of trees or trees that are taken down. And that would, that was when he was at our meeting for the Tory Road, six trees to be taken down. And he was correct. And I tried to find some language to back that up anywhere in our town ordinances and couldn't find it. So, but that was the town policy at the time, and it was a very positive policy. But it certainly has not been followed through. In fact, between the former town manager and the current director of public services, the policy has been no new street tree plantings. So that's what we're up against.
We have enough to discuss at the next meeting then.
Yeah, we do. Also, Jay, you've got these items for the agenda for next meeting. Also, our July meeting is our annual elections. That should go on the agenda as well.
Can you just clarify exactly what you expect those agenda items to be? I have, I have town street treat planting ideas
Yep.
on there.
Yep.
And was, was the street tree inventory, did that manifest into an agenda item? And what, to what extent do you want to describe that discussion?
No, unless we want to discuss if that data of street trees, of town street trees has been updated and to what extent. Yeah, I'd like.
I will check with Carol Baker to see if she was around or if she has that data in a, in a GIS format.
She would. She'd be the person to talk to. Yeah, let's do that and see if we can, you know, mention that. Because, as I said, I can't confirm legally what the town council agreed upon at that time, that there be no net loss of trees. And I can't even tell you the date. It was late nineteen nineties, early twenty thousands. And I found, I could find no verification of that.
That's the thing, the type of thing that should be in the comp plan. Maybe it's in there.
Well, that's a good point. I did not check that. I did not check that. I will, I will. And if you could give that a.
Hasn't been adopted yet. It could be modified.
It's been adopted.
It's been adopted. Okay.
It was adopted last, last, last meeting of the council.
Right.
Okay, I will check that to see if I can find any historical reference to that. It was a common thing. It might have been just something that was mentioned to placate our citizens' tree group, Act for SK. But I will look to see if I can find anything on that. So. Does anybody else have any ideas on what CONCOM might want to take up in the next twelve months? Okay. I think I'm at the end of my agenda. Our next meeting is going to be.
David, if you could, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just, so is it, do we just have those two items, the, the town street tree planting ideas and the election of officers? And then whatever information I can find in regard to the inventory from Carol. And I'll also look to see about the replacement policy, if I can find anything on that. But any other, any other items that I missed?
Lorraine, have I missed anything?
No, I think that's it. All the, I think the various things are rolled under tree, tree activities.
Okay. As far as formal agenda items, Jay, I think that's it. I would have a, a letter, you know, letter number F or something for additional business, just for us to have a free flowing discussion of anything we might have missed tonight. Is that, is that possible? Or is that not formal?
Well, what about other new ideas for the work, for the work? If the current agenda is to discuss the tree, street tree concept and town trees, also, we'd be open to any, we could discuss any new ideas that come up at the next meeting.
Also, I would add that a formal idea would be continuing the discussion of what we would do for next year's fiscal budget. And, and what is the amount? And how can we affect it increase in that amount? And what we would like to do with that amount. So let's put Conservation Commission budget as a formal agenda item. Jay.
Okay. I do want to, you know, agenda items are meant to be specific when it comes to decisions of the board. The, 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 the agenda item should be as detailed as possible to give the reader an idea of what's being discussed and what possibly could be voted on. You do, you do have item I, which is a standing item on your agenda, that's next meeting date and agenda items.
Correct.
So if, if an idea comes up that's mid-meeting, let's say, somebody wants to make a motion to add discussion of something to the agenda at that time, you could do so under that I with the idea that it may possibly become a future agenda item.
Right.
You know, you can amend the agenda on the fly for discussion purposes, but I would refrain from putting a Yeah, I would, I would refrain from putting a general heading to something that you guys might intend to take action on.
Correct. No action, no action. This is for discussion. Further discussion. We can always take action the following month.
Right. And I would advise you that if something comes up that you, you would affect, take a poll of the board, get a motion to add it to the agenda for discussion at the time. At the meeting.
Yep.
If you don't, if you don't anticipate it at a time.
Yeah. If it's not imperative, yeah, right, definitely. Okay, our next meeting date, if I'm looking at my calendar correctly.
Should be July sixth.
July sixth, Tuesday, July sixth, at six o'clock PM. Okay. We have to designate a member for attending the TRC meeting, which is going to be, is it Wednesday, the ninth, Jay?
Correct.
At what time? It's all over the place.
Yeah, I don't know, because it's at the, it's at the, the desire of the duty planning board member. It was not, we, we did not get one assigned, because we did not have a May regular meeting.
Okay, so it could be nine o'clock in the morning, or it could be one o'clock in the afternoon. Does any of our attending members here this evening want to be the representative for the TRC meeting on June ninth? And if nobody else wants to, I'm perfectly willing to. But if somebody else wants to get involved, please be my guest. Okay, Jay, you can put me down.
David, what's the, when you attend these meetings, what's the, the nature of your involvement?
The nature of it is in whatever I feel I want to get involved in. Generally, it is usually with Conservation Commission related issues like, have you, if you're plant, if you're presenting a landscaping plan, have you used the South Kingstown subdivision cartoons and descriptions of how to plant a tree? But I feel free to talk about density, traffic plans, particularly like on Curtis Corner Road. Anything you are interested in, you can feel free to bring up. Because this is where things start before they go to the planning board. And generally, as far as technical review, it is involved in a lot with John Shock talking about the size of the sewer connection. Or somebody talking about how wide is the road? And the Union Fire District rep saying, do you have enough turnaround space in that cul-de-sac? And, but, you know, I feel free to speak up on any of these things. And generally, mostly I sit there and I bring up the landscaping plan. And I don't talk about specific trees. I talk about density or how much are you clear cutting? Or this species is inappropriate. That's, but you can feel free to talk about any of that stuff. And it's, it's interesting. And like I say, it's pre-planning board. It's getting rid of the technical stuff. So that when the planning board is looking at a development, they know at least they've met the criteria. Then they can criticize, well, I don't like how you're doing that. I don't like the way this looks. And so that's the planning board. But the technical review committee is making sure that they've got the technical stuff in order. And like I said, that for me certainly looks at, they have their own tree planting specs. And I say, well, what we're trying to do is standardize everything here. Use the town specs. Before you get to the planning board, change your drawing, change your, you know, description. So it's, and, and sometimes they're really within an hour, hour and a half. Other times, we've gone for three hours where I'm just sitting there, because they've granted the Conservation Commission. They've granted us to be there, a seat to be there. So I'm not going to abuse that and say, you know, I really need to get lunch. I really need another cup of coffee. No, I, I stay there. And sometimes it's a bitch, you know, it's, so I would invite you to check it out, you know? Otherwise, I'm willing to do it. It's very bureaucratic. It's very bureaucratic.
David, I would like, can I just clarify on that a little bit?
Please.
So the Conservation Commission has a role with the TRC, as you, as you all know. But you're, the intent was that the member that represents the Conservation Commission stays within the realm of what the Conservation Commission is typically charged with doing. That's set in our own town code. That's also outlined, I believe, in the Rhode Island general laws as to what you guys are focused on. Natural resources, conservation, dovetails with, you know, stormwater and density and all that stuff. And David is correct. I would say the primary role of the Conservation Um, I would say the primary role of the Conservation Commission member in these. Is reviewing the overall impacts to natural resources. Are there things that can be tweaked, uh, for conservation purposes? Limits of clearing, um, increased buffers, things of that nature that are at the core of what Conservation Commission is charged with doing. As a secondary nature, as a secondary component to that. Questions come up with, say, a traffic study or a vision clearance at a corner, at an intersection or a roadway. Where the town engineer points out or the town, uh, the town planner points out a concern that they may have. Because that's more their forte. We, you know, we can't expect the Conservation Commission member to be fluent in a traffic study. Or general transportation rules that DOT may impose. Um, so those questions come up and a lot of times it's those secondary input from the board members where. Where somebody says, yeah, I agree with, I agree with John Shock or I agree with our town engineer. Um, we can't really, as a layperson, I can't really assess if that corner, if this is actually safe, if we don't know if the clearance is appropriate. By generalities like that. Um, I, I disagree a little bit with David that you don't go to the extent where you can come out of the box with, uh, having a. Uh, we'll say a difference of opinion with density or, or something. As long as it ties back to your role as a Conservation Commission member and what your charge is, it's fair game. Cause that's the role that you play when you sit there as a Conservation Commission member. But the rest of it sort of, sort of comes in as a secondary level of support to support other concerns that might get brought up that maybe. You missed or didn't even think of, you know?
I got you. How many people are in attendance?
I agree with Jay and, um, I have in the past brought up, uh, with these traffic studies and, uh, can. Traffic congestion at certain intersections, I've brought up air quality. And I felt that that was within, uh, the realm of discussion of Conservation Commission. Because if you have cars idling at these intersections for an increased amount of time over what? The current density is, that is an issue. And I've, you know, I've, I've mentioned that.
How many people are usually at those meetings? Or, or how many departments?
There's the building and zoning official as a member, uh, the Department of, uh. Develop, uh, public services, the town engineer, the planning director. Um, a plan, uh, those are the four primary, um. Department head or department members that are there. There's a duty member from the planning board. That is assigned, much like the duty member for the TR, uh, for the Conservation Commission that is assigned. And, uh, also Chris Heiner, uh, from Union Fire District.
And you're there to actually facilitate the Zoom at this point.
Yeah, and I'm there. I mean, I, I take the applications and we set them up for the planning board. We do the staff memos. We organize and do the administrative side of things. So I'm as familiar with the applications as the planning director is. Uh, so yeah, I'm there as well. As far as members, other members, um. The applicants and their project teams will attend, obviously to discuss the project with the TRC. Um, and on some occasions, not all, we do get members of the public that attend, but. TRC meetings are really advisory to the planning board. The discussions are technical in nature. So comments from the public, while we listen to them, there's really not much that we can do to respond because most of them are subjective. Most comments are subjective. Um, at times it's an opportunity for maybe. Uh, a local property owner or a neighbor to a development to say, hey. To bring something to the town that maybe the town wasn't aware of, a block storm drain, say, or something like that where. Drainage isn't working appropriately, even though they think drainage is there. But for the most part, there's not much for public comment because there's not much from a technical standpoint that. The TRC can do with that kind of public comment.
We're not planning board meeting.
Correct. We, I frequently will, will field calls from people that are interested in attending TRC and say, hey. It's a public meeting, you're free to attend, but your comments really should go to the planning board because the TRC is not in a position to really do anything with them. They're merely advisory to the planning board anyway.
Yep.
Jay, how much, what time in advance do they provide the meeting materials for review?
I get the agenda set. I try to get the agenda set a week in advance. Sometimes it's a little later than that. Sometimes it's five days, but. Uh, standard practice, I try to utilize the same schedule that we do for the planning board and that's a week. And now the way we've been doing things, as, as I'm sure you've seen, everything is online. So the agendas have all the, uh, information attached to them.
Is it possible that you can send out? I, I, sometimes I'd like to see those, those things to know whether, you know, just to see what's going on. Like I, it's difficult for me to commit to attend the meeting. A month in advance without seeing what's on the agenda, maybe just a bunch of traffic studies that I don't have any expertise in. Um, but is it possible to send me the, um, or, or Matt? For that matter, anyone else who's interested to send the agenda just to, um, to see if there's any. If I might have comments and discuss it with David or whoever else is going.
Well, the problem, the.
Jay.
Yeah, but I think that the issue is the timing.
Right. So you say we, about a week in advance, you'd be sending it out.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, when you normally send it out.
But, but that's the purpose of having a TRC representative, a Conservation Commission representative lined up.
Right, so if David was got, was slated to attend. And I had a comment about stormwater on one of the projects, would it be inappropriate if I discussed it with him before the meeting? Or I could just attend the meeting myself as a citizen.
As a citizen, you could, yeah. There's some, there's, there's some issues, there's some timing issues there. And honestly, I send. I, I've, I've got a pretty long laundry list of sending. Well, just sending agendas out and to remember to send it to the Conservation Commission in addition to the. The TRC mem, you know, the duty, duty member of the TRC. It's, I, I just, I, I can't really accommodate that because I'll, I'll forget and then I'll be subject to, I, hey, I didn't do it.
So David, could you send it to me when you get it?
Yeah, definitely. Sure. Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, the, the other thing you could do is you could sign up on, on the, on the website. Um, the, I forget what it's called, notify me.
I think I did. I don't get anything from it though.
And if, I think if you sign up, if you sign up for the, the TRC meeting. You can, you can, you'll get a notification when those things get posted, when those.
Oh, all right. That's, that's easy. Then you don't have to do it.
Yeah, but again, the time is a timing issue because I generally set the notifications to get. To go out two days before the meeting. Be, because agendas can be modified up until forty eight hours before a meeting.
Yeah, that's not a lot of time.
If an agenda gets modified, I don't want to have to keep sending out notifications and people will start saying, what, why am I getting seventeen or? Five, three notifications for the same meeting.
Sure. Okay.
So Lorraine, yes, when I get it, I will send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep. David, can you? Somebody else, by the, who's, who said, Matt, Matt, yeah, I can do that to you as well.
Or you can just send it to Lorraine and Lorraine can send.
Okay, I'll do that. Chain mail.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Okay, uh, at this point, uh, we're near the end of our meeting. Um, I want to ask, uh, everyone. Do you have anything else that you think might be pertinent to, uh, our commission? Uh, that we need to talk about right now, um, before we adjourn. And hearing none, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
A motion, we adjourn.
Mary has a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Matthew has seconded, uh. Any discussion? No, um, uh, we will adjourn. Thank you all for doing this. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Welcome, guys. Have a good one.
Yep.